It's been a long day already. In compliance with chapter 231, Title 975, Title 88 of the Act, notice of this meeting is provided as specified in the Act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in notice and said notice was supposed to be addressed to the Board of Education Office. Mail through the lovely son of Star Legend and all Jersey Herald news in the lovely journal. Mail through the lovely township clerk advertising in the lovely sun, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. In recognition of all here present and in recognition of the importance of these proceedings, it is requested that all cell phones and pagers be turned off or silenced for the duration of this meeting. Please. Questions, regents?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and equal civil with liberty and justice for all.
Approve of the minutes. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Ancheck Martin here. Ms. Flynn here. Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Gupta. Dr. Reed. Susa here. Mrs. Schalaera.
Here.
Mrs. Spizada.
Here.
Mr. Kazinski.
Here. Right now, please approve of the minutes.
President, make a motion to approve the minutes. It's ready.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondents?
There is a duty to see.
Okay. Mr. Waddell.
Sorry. My problem.
Can I put it in? Yes. Actually, Mr. Vanning?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to begin with the trust of the inside.
Sure. Here. Do you like to see my phone or just start?
Yeah, it's recorded.
It's recorded, but I might take this out of your way. It's not updated. It's set at 24. We'll go with it.
Do I have it?
No, I took it. Good evening. Please excuse me. It should say the 24th. The last update did. I must have in transition, but we'll go with it. I gave this presentation last Monday to a group of teachers that participated in the science program. I just made some small changes, so it really... I'm going to use... Can I get my new one real quick? Yeah. My computer. He didn't want the two-hour one, so.
No, he don't.
Sorry about that. So as mentioned, in 2013, we started a science pilot. This was due to a couple of things. We had a grant become available from Hafner LaRoche, making a very generous amount, and it really spurred a lot of thought regarding how we teach science in elementary schools. There's a lot of things going on right now in science. For one, we're getting a new set of standards, next-generation science standards, which are going to be adopted. I'm on that adoption committee for New Jersey. They're going to be adopted shortly, and we're going to have a couple of years to phase in a whole different type of standard where science is really focusing on design. It's really focusing less on content, and it's focusing on kids, like Mr. Waddell was about to say, getting dirty, going through the process of thinking like a scientist, going through the process of learning engineering skills. So with all these things in mind, with the advent of the grant, we really, at the beginning of March, really took the initiative to start... That's okay. To start a new project. So we decided to choose from, actually Smithsonian, from a National Science Foundation grant, came up with a program. If you go out and look at what schools do with science in high-form districts, it's pretty much this program and a false program. We decided to choose this program just based on simple concepts. Some of the feedback I got from teachers is that we do very simple experiments, very simple hands-on things. It's the way we think about them that bring them to the next level. So Russell, if you could just forward that. So we chose to pilot in 13 classrooms, beginning in April, the science and technology concept. You'll see if they refer to it as a SDC program. And again, just to highlight this program, number one, it's research-based. We went with a program that shows learning for students. It was developed by Smithsonian Institute, enhanced by Carolina Biohazard Sciences. So they are the marketer. They put it out there. They fill all the kits and the material like that. They provide all the resources. We go back and forth with them. We wanted a model that used inquiry as a mechanism for exploration. So one of the big things, one of the big terms out there right now in science education is inquiry. And what that means is kids are learning about science by discovering it, by doing it, by coming across it in the field, to say. These kits include all types of materials that support language arts, math resource, a lot of common core, which we'll see in the next slide. It comes with it formative and substantive assessments that are very teacher-friendly and comes with a lot of teacher support, web-based support, a teacher guide. You'll see through some data I collected that the teachers really felt supported through going through the pilot. And most of all, it's aligned with next-generation science standards. So as we're being proactive, looking at the future of science education, the topics included in these, this kit, these models, modules, which are really aligned very nicely to where we're going, next-generation science standards. What I really liked about this program is that it incorporated the same learning cycle for each module that's being done. So we think about how we teach science now. Maybe we teach 15, 20 topics, K through, 4K through 5. I'm sorry, I went backwards. We kind of break this down into three major themes, and each theme goes through the focus, explore, reflect, and apply cycle. And it's really helps students develop a rhythm, a learning rhythm, helps engage all the students so they know what's coming. And it really helps to maximize where we can bring in and integrate in the science classroom. This is a slide I would choose to show you when talking about this cycle. In this set, this bullet set, these are all the things that each module will go through: focus, explore, reflect, and apply. The words you see in blue align to our common core, and the words you see in red are really what we're trying to highlight in the science classroom. So if we look at how we begin this module, focus, identify the problems, students record and discuss their prior knowledge. Kids are, take a pair of sharing. They're recording and discussing. It's a link to the common core. And when they explore, this is when students get dirty, they write, design a plan, they include materials, they problem solve, they take on roles, they problem solve, they solve a problem, they test their ideas. This is the hands-on inquiry portion. When they reflect, the modules involve a lot of journaling. They reflect on what they saw, they compare and contrast, right? They make claims, they make predictions. These are all things we want our students doing in science. They defend, they make an argument. That's a very high-level thing. That's something we have them doing in here. And they apply. How does this apply to my world? That's really the last portion of this. Before moving forward, I'd like to thank the whole pilot team. These teachers were great. They really were. They volunteered. And the modules we piloted in kindergarten, we looked at push-pull. I've got to tell you, it was one of the coolest things. I woke up to a kindergarten class and said, "What are you doing today?" "I'm doing physics today." "Well, that's really cool." Organisms, where we add a lot of live organisms in the class, changes, and plant growth and development. So we looked at these four modules, K through 3. These are teachers that helped, some teachers I'd just like to recognize. Becky Oliver, thank you very much. Becky Lafferty, Sarah Sorensen, thank you very much for coming and trying our pilot. Across all five schools, we piloted at least two modules per school. I'd like to share with you some data that we got. The first type of data, qualitative data, what we saw when we went to classrooms, a lot of times I'd visit, try to visit often as I could, bring other administrators in, we saw students exploring. This is an example of a STEM class right here on your left. The technology they're using is a hand lens. We talk about microscopes, but this is a very crucial piece of technology that students are exploring, something just a little bit smaller, and she'd really take a look at that. On the right side, we see compare, contrast, gravel, sand. The left is the organisms, probably snails or millipedes. The right is changes, looking at physical properties, chemical properties, different materials. I think we have millipedes on the left, excitement, you can see, that happens to be yield of billow disorder, and then millipedes in our hair at one point there. We took it out. The plants over there, you see, we're plants, we have special plants, Wisconsin fast plants. I believe they're a 36-day growing cycle, right? 36 days from seed to seed is 36 days. So students literally learn about the plant life cycle by looking at several plant life cycles. As part of this kit, students actually attached insects, the sticks for pollinating, which was pretty cool. We have a short video next. This, oh, I'm sorry, a couple more pictures. Compare, contrast, snails and guppies, what's similar, what's different. The bottom, we're looking at changes separating salt from gravel. The bottom right, I walked into a classroom, I got the time wrong, but the teachers are all comparable, the teacher resources out there, so I thought I'd take a picture of that. Up top, we're taking on different jobs in a science investigation there. So this is like actually a very short video, two-minute video about our first-grade organisms class. I want to share this with you. It's on our website.
So what are you going to be doing?
We're going to make an aquarium.
What do you need?
We need guppies and snails. And we need water. We need plant water. We need land for them to eat, for the snails and snails to have their eggs.
The head of the science department at Nolley High School in Campagna had received a grant through Hafner LaRoche, and they decided upon using the Smithsonian Institute program for this particular science project. So we really appreciate the money that was donated through Hafner LaRoche to be able to provide us with these wonderful kits.
First thing, you will get a container that has gravel in it. And it says to put about two cups of gravel in your aquarium. And when you put it in there, it says you can slope the gravel. Does anyone know what the word slope means? What does slope mean?
Our classroom has four iPads that we've been using during the school year, and these iPads have provided us with another tool in the learning process. They said so, Sam. They have put in the gravel, the water, they place their guppies and their snails in there, and they've been doing observations with these, and that's what we will continue to do over the next couple of weeks.
What grade? It's grade one, first grade. So that's just a sample of what you would see while, you know, they put it together using technology, but you would very often see that going on in a classroom. In analyzing the pilot, we asked, did two things. The first thing we did was we took a survey of teachers rated 1 to 5. 1, don't agree, just like, to 5, strongly agree and really like. Several questions, about 20, that kind of thin this out for you. And then we gave the substantive assessment for each module provided by Carolina to every student to see from the student's side how much they learned. I have some of that data to share with you as well. So this is just some of the numbers coming out. Students were excited, did not wait to participate in science, unanimous, it was a 5. The content component in this module was rigorous when compared to our current map. Through all these slides, we just go through, you'll see a trend of right side of the graph as we go through, so 3, 4, 5, talking about the rigor as compared to our current map. Students worked through the design process, which is, the design process is a big part of where we're going in science. So you see the 5 there. There were meaningful connections to another content, to content, other real-world activities. 5s. This module provided helpful teacher pacing guides and clear explanations of lesson activities. This was a big one for me because if we're making a shift to a new way of thinking about science with new standards coming on, teacher support is number one. So what we're looking for in a program, which is a program that supports teachers, special teachers that may not be used to science, give them the support they need to have a successful classroom. There were usable formative assessments that would help teachers take the science pulse of their class. 3, 4s, 5s. The substantive assessments were able to identify student growth and achievement. 3, 4s, 5s. These are all, we always approve upon these, this is what they provide. I recommend using this module such as this district-wide, unanimously tense from the teachers. So I was pretty excited about that. I also wanted to know how long would this take for planning purposes? I was surprised by this data. I thought that these would fit nicely into a third of the year. Many teachers thought that this could be a quarter of the year moving forward. So districts that put this in usually do a third of the year. I asked teachers, what was the thing that you liked most about this module? And I was happy to see two things that were bigger than the rest when put into a world. Number one, kids, I'm sure they're talking about kid excitement, if I went back and looked at the lingo, it's really there at the center of it, and experiments, right? Learning, another big word here. Analysis, reflections, right? These are all great words when describing a science classroom. Achievable, another big word there. Proficient, interesting. I also asked, oh, it's not there. That's okay, Russell, you can keep the protocol. This is our performance matters analysis of a common assessment. This is the first-grade organisms test. One of the big things I wanted to see if their, their substantive assessments were compatible with our performance matters program. Through email, send them out to the teachers, ask them to administer this, get the results in. Many teachers were able to do that, and the results came back. You can see at the bottom, 91% was the learning that we measured on this particular assessment. You know, in talking with teachers, you know, this really breaks down the question so we can identify areas to move forward with, areas to work on. Russell, you bring up the next slide. We looked at one particular question, number eight, where we didn't do so well. We looked at the question and kind of how the stats came back, and, you know, it's kind of split, telling you that kids really went to A and C evenly wrong as B. If you go to the next slide, you can see the question, and students had trouble. Number eight is the question, which statement best describes why that picture is not a seed? So it's really an application-type question that we need to focus on with the students. But knowing this and being able to get this assessment into the force matters, into the data, allows us to take a look at what's going on and really form in the next cycle and really how kids are thinking at this, so it's pretty handy. Moving forward, we're looking to roll this out K-5 next year with three, except for kindergarten, three different modules per grade level. This comes in mind a little early, but it's good with the next-generation science standards as we move into a greater understanding of design in all of these. These would take approximately a third of the year. As you can see, we're also looking to pilot this in seventh grade to see if this type of system for learning about science can work at the middle school level, which is a little different. So we're going to follow that in three classes next year, and then we're looking to roll this out K through 5 in next year as well. What kind of support do teachers need? This is the last Monday when I met the teachers. They need formal training, and we're looking to provide at least two days of training for each grade-level teacher for an introduction to each kit, unpacked the kits, get the training, go through a burn cycle. And also, maybe your troubleshooting, meaning, you know, what's going on, probably turnkey that, where we're looking at, you know, where are the issues in all these modules? We're looking to order supplies, really. Spacing building came up, right? Where are we going to put all these kits? How are we going to organize it at the building level? Assistance for care and supplemental materials. With these kits comes a huge language direction component of in-classroom materials, class sets. So when students are learning about organisms, just on this cycle, they get a booklet about different types of organisms that they'll be looking at. And, you know, we're looking to do other things around the district, bring in different topics in the library, that folks have on these topics and stuff like that. So really exciting stuff going on in the science department. Do you have any questions or anything? Yes?
Only because we went to K through 5 and then just went to 7. What happened to the sixth grade?
In sixth grade, it's, we looked at as a middle school module set, and we were kind of flunked. They were looking at four modules. We weren't looking to roll that out just yet. Another issue was that the kids were still changing some reason. We only went one kid in kindergarten because as next-generation science standards come around, the kids are being developed as such. So the little ones were not ready yet, so we didn't want to buy kids that were not ready to put out there. So there were both those issues really. You have a question? Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to also speak about our language arts model classroom training that we've been conducting since December. Tonight, we're going to talk about the philosophy behind our training, the process that we underwent to get a consultant in and then work with the teachers, select the teachers and work with them for the school year. We're going to talk specifically about the teacher selection process. We also have teachers here who are going to talk about their experience with the program throughout the course of the year, and then we're going to talk about the next steps. First, philosophy, this is the last one we're going to talk.
Questions?
A lot has changed when it comes to teaching literacy. We understand a lot more about how the brain works, about how we learn to read and become literate, and that reason, for those reasons, the classroom has been in a state of great flux when it comes to teaching students, especially at early ages. One of the things that falls across all literature is that most of our reading habits are established by grade three. So we take full advantage of that time from pre-K through third grade. We're loosening people up for a larger fight moving forward, but by third grade, if we get certain things in place, kids are going to be prepared for all sorts of levels of success. Now, our goal is to create lifelong readers. If you think about our strategic plan, and all things we're talking about, it will have changed greatly by technology. There is not only greater access to information, but there are greater amounts of information out there for people on every possible topic. Everyone now thinks that technology can be an author, publisher, director, producer. Because of that, you know, they've settled over the last 10 or 15 years, we've actually created more content than we have in the rest of the history of the human race. So, and that's only growing exponentially with the internet and things like that. So how do we teach students to not only love to do, love to read and to gain information for their self, for themselves, but also for their jobs, their families, their rest, but also how do they know of all this information, what's active, what's valid, what's reliable? Are we teaching those skills? So it's not just reading and comprehension, but it's validation and experimentation, if you go back to Mr. Vanning's earlier presentation. How do we create these lifelong readers? At the core of the philosophy that we've kind of been exploring now is this idea of a just-read book. We've been going back to when I was in school, the idea of giving everyone the same book at the same time in the same way is a thing of the past. Most of the time, if you're giving everyone the same book at the same time, you're actually giving no one the appropriate book. And so that takes a shift in philosophy and a shift in resources. So this idea of just-read books, making sure we're training our teachers to understand who our students are as people, what do they like, what are they passionate about? Because you're more likely to read something that interests you. Then also, what kind of reader are they? What struggles are they having? Because again, when you talk about good reading, the set of skills we all have to master is the same person-to-person, but when we approach certain skills and how to quickly match those skills are different from person-to-person. So if we approach everyone the same way, again, we're doing everyone a disservice. So this idea of knowing what is our just-read learner and what is a just-read book for that person at that time, that student at that time. Knowing that is not even half the battle. Far more importantly than that is even if you know that, if you don't have the right resources then to put them in children's hands, there's really no point in knowing that. So we have to have not just-read books, not only just-read books, but we have to have those just-read environments where students are in a privileged environment and have access to multiple genres, have multiple levels. So if I'm interested in detective fiction, I can read something at my level, but if Mr. Kazinski is interested in detective fiction, his level may be different, in which case he needs a different book. Just knowing we're both interested in detective fiction, give us the same book. It might be too easy for one and too hard for the other. Neither way, you're not maximizing the learning. And when that happens, and what we've been seeing is a trend, not only in district, but naturally, is we're turning off readers before they even become readers. And that's something that we don't want to do, given what I explained in the beginning. So our philosophy is this idea of knowing the current science behind literacy instruction, getting resources in our teachers' hands so that they can get to know our students individually, and creating environments where it's possible for one teacher interacting with 20 or 25 students individually at the same time. The final piece of the philosophy, though, is bridging that homeschool connection so that literacy instruction doesn't start and end in the classroom. It goes far beyond that parents are seen as equal collaborators in building that larger just-read environment. I actually posted, a study came out from Scholastic, was re-released, and I posted on my superintendent's classroom about the study and tried to get the links out there, but started to share some resources, just a few simple ones. For parents, over the summer, this big push for summer reading. One of the things that the study talks about is how parents can successfully put books in students' hands. Well, if I'm talking about putting the white book in your child's hand, you ought to have to know what that white book is. Well, I gave some websites that allow you to go in Well, I gave some websites that allow you to go in and type in the names of books and find out what level is that. To explore certain levels, again, when we talk about literacy, there's a grade level, there's something called the DRA, there are LexisLs scores. It breaks everything down for parents in any way you want to approach it. But one of the things what we do as a district is the consultant that we've been using, we want to bring in, start having, start giving parent workshops. So this philosophy gets out there. But again, I post them as to try and, number one, encourage parents to take advantage of the summertime as a time when the kids become in control of their own reading. I'm not reading when I have to for second grade or for a science assignment. I get to read what I want to read, so let's kind of encourage them to read. The study also talks about parents and their mindset for buying books. What I'd recommend, since we're looking for just write books and the kids exploring and picking the books themselves, the Nellie Library is a fantastic resource. So I've linked in my post to a number of their webpages to try and get information directly to you. Our summer reading kickoff from the library is this Friday, 11:00 a.m. School's over. Why wait? Get into the library right away. But again, the big piece, why I like the library is not just from my own past experience. I remember going and mulling over the stacks and pulling the books I thought I wanted to read. But students, young people get turned off to read, back to our philosophy, because they pull out a book thinking, I should be able to read any book. And that's just not the case. I could pull out some physics textbooks from Mr. Vane, I'd probably struggle. The idea is, do they pull out the just write book to know how to go into a section and find what they're interested in? And then within that section, pull out a book that's appropriate for them so they can enjoy reading and feel successful as readers. And so our general philosophy of these four points are creating that in all of our students so as they grow up, they truly are lifelong readers. Go back over to Ms. Wong.
As we began the process, we felt it was important to select the right consultant for us. We knew this would be a multi-year project, and we wanted to ensure that that person was someone that we knew would work with our staff and work with the administrators in district to ensure success. So we vetted multiple consultants, we interviewed consultants, we checked references to find the best fit for us. And we really think we were successful in that. You'll hear more from the teachers in a little while about that. At the same time, we were creating our first, what we call the Tier One, our first group of teachers who were interested in going through the process. These teachers were selected based upon an interest level. I didn't hear more about that as well. But, so at the same time, while we're looking at a consultant and finding our teachers, we wanted to make sure that both were ready at the same time. From there, we worked with consultants to conduct a variety of trainings. We started with the Tier One group with after-school sessions. There were five total sessions where the teachers learned a variety of topics from read alouds to reading with a purpose to word estimates and different activities that they could begin to try in their classroom immediately upon leaving those sessions. At the beginning of each session, the consultant asked for feedback from the teachers. The teachers were more than willing to talk about their experiences that they were having with the students in their classrooms as they were trying each of these different activities. They were, the teachers were fantastic. They were open about what was working, what didn't work, and the consultant worked with them to give them suggestions as to how they could move forward. From there, we conducted a number of model lessons at different grade spans. We chunked the teachers K-2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, 8. And the consultant came in and actually taught various lessons based upon the after-school sessions that we had with the teachers as the observers in the class. Each one of those sessions began with an introduction. We spent about a half hour talking about what would happen during the model lesson. The consultant presented the model lesson with the teachers observing, using our actual students from our actual teachers who were in the Tier One group. And then from there, we debriefed with each group of teachers, what they saw, how it was implemented, questions that they may have had through that process. Ms. DeBonis is going to speak to our teacher selection process. Any questions?
We selected teachers from grades K through eight. At first, it was in the K through six, but the middle school teachers really wanted to jump in there, and we were very happy that they did. We had representatives from all the elementary schools and the middle school. We had complete teacher participation. And actually, what we did is we asked teachers who would be interested in joining with Tier One. And I just want to say that my experience with this was a new one, but Shelley Klein, who is the consultant, she inspired us so much and made us realize how much we really needed to learn. And one of the things that I really liked about her the most was that when she spoke with us in the after-school trainings, she always addressed us as though we were the students. So sometimes she would say, readers, this is what we're going to do today. And just by saying that word, readers, got everybody involved to really believe that they could be a reader. And so she also did that, of course, in the model lessons with the children. But it was great the way she just brought us all into it. And we're going to have a few teachers share with you their experience as well. We did do the five sessions from 3:30 to 5:30 after school, but it was really like a breath of fresh air, honestly.
Ms. Oliver?
Well, I have to thank you for letting me participate in this. I looked forward to each session like you can't believe. This Shelley Klein has a voice that I want. I mean, I just, I want to be her. I think she loves reading as much as I do. And it was like we had this affinity because, yeah, she gets it. I love books, I love the way they feel, I love to read. Yet she gave me suggestions on how to pass this on to my students, which I couldn't wait to get back to class every day after I met with her and try some of her things. I now have rugs, I have an easel, I have a whole list of books that I went out and got for read alouds. And I learned that it was okay not to read just right, like right after lunch when they needed a break. We started our day with that on the rug. We did a read aloud that was like maybe a sixth grade book and just one chapter a day, talked about it, the vocabulary. It was just a whole new way of teaching that I really feel my students benefited from. And like I said, I just would like to be her. She's wonderful. So thank you.
Next, we have Vicki Latka.
Hi, my name is Vicki Latka. I teach first grade at Yanacost School. And as Mrs. Oliver also mentioned, I would love to be Shelley. And she is absolutely wonderful. And she has renewed my faith, I guess you could say, in the reading program that we are following and how it's bringing the core curriculum content standards into the program. As Mr. Lazovic mentioned, the just write books. And that's something that I'm working with my first graders, teaching them, finding a book that's just right for you. And it is an individualized program that encourages the children to find something that they're comfortable with. We bring in pairs of shoes with, one day I brought in like about six or seven different pairs of shoes and told the children, I'm going to go out jogging after school today, and I need a pair of shoes that are just right for jogging. I first pulled out my husband's size 13 sneaker and asked them, do you think this is just right for me? And we went, I went through the process with soccer shoes, all different types of shoes. And then when I pulled out my own pair of sneakers, they said, yeah, it's like, that would be a great pair of shoes. And I explained to them, as Shelley is teaching us, that that's the way that you choose a book. You find a book that's just right for you. So that when you see someone else reading something that maybe you're not as interested in, or maybe it might not just be right for you, it's okay. You look for something that you love. And it's also working across the genres and also bringing the reading into the science program, the science, bringing all the different subject areas into it. And like I said, I'm really excited about this, and I really appreciate that you have brought her into our lives. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Chopra Stentella.
I'm also a first grade teacher. And I was fortunate enough to be in the first training about eight or nine years ago for guided reading. And we had a reading coach who came in and worked with us for a year, but we didn't have the materials that we needed. We really had nothing but someone in the building helping us. And we were never able to get the program going. We were really ahead of ourselves eight years ago and then just were backpedaling. We didn't know how to level children, we didn't know what books to use. Each building had different books. So we're very fortunate that we'll be getting the materials so that we can make everything successful in our classrooms. As Mr. Vane had said, just bringing the other content areas together is important. And bringing fiction and nonfiction together into a reading series is what we really need for a reading program. We, Shelley showed us some great ways to bring fiction and nonfiction, more nonfiction. We're doing a lot with fiction. All of our reading series have fiction books in them. There's usually one little short nonfiction verse that we go through. But this is really bringing everything in and talking about the real world and making connections to self-text of the world right in our reading groups. So we're really excited about it.
Our next steps. First, we'll be after the board meeting this evening, ordering materials. You'll see appearing on the agenda is a resolution to approve Language Arts materials. And I want to talk a little bit about what those materials are. There are two sets of materials on the agenda. One is classroom libraries, and the other one is a guided reading library for each building. For the classroom libraries, we're looking to purchase 200 titles per classroom, K-8, every classroom in the district. Not only for the teachers who are in the Tier One and what will be, what we're talking about with staff training in Tier Two, but put them in every classroom so that the teachers begin to have access, although they may not be trained yet, their books, and they'll be talking to their colleagues, and hopefully that will spur interest. But also so that there are materials and resources available for all students. Not only the students who have teachers who have been trained so far, but that, so every student has access to those materials. One of the, what I think, one of the exciting things about those classroom libraries is that working with the company by which we're going to purchase, we've provided them with different topics in science, social studies, and math by grade level so that they can make our classroom libraries specific to what we're doing in other content areas. So of those 200 titles, we'll have grade-specific science materials, grade-specific social studies materials. And then the teachers can then begin to use them in an interdisciplinary way. So it's not just reading a fiction book with students, but having a multitude of materials available for all the content areas and being able to build that into their daily instruction. In terms of the guided reading libraries, we are looking to purchase a guided reading library by building in each of the five elementaries and in the middle school. The guided reading libraries have approximately 1,600 books. It's about 260 titles, five or six books per title, with multiple books at each guided reading level. So that there should never be a time when we run out of books at any guided reading level for any teacher to use. They can use them with small group instruction. Again, we're looking to purchase the kit that is 40% fiction, 60% nonfiction, so that we can build in the common core nonfiction piece of it, but also make sure that we're building in the science and social studies piece of it. Again, to make sure that we're looking at interdisciplinary instruction and not just instruction in isolation. In terms of staff training, we have a Tier Two group, which is starting next week. They are ready to go. I'd just like to add, we have a limited number of seats in each group. We can put 25 teachers in a group. We have, we had 45 participating in Tier Two. So we have a huge waiting list already for our Tier Three group, which will be down the road a little bit. The Tier Two training, which will happen this summer, is the training that the Tier One group had after school for, during, from December to February. Going into September, Tier One and Tier Two groups will be trained in assessment training, which will be in September, October, so that by early fall, middle of the fall, all the teachers in Tier One and Tier Two can assess all of the students in their class to find out exactly what level they're on. They can then use the guided reading libraries that we're putting in each building to support the students at their specific level. And then they'll be working throughout the year. They're training, the Tier Two teachers will have a couple extra training sessions to make up for what Tier One finished this year. But by mid-year, they'll be working side by side. So even though they're in two separate tiers, if they are in the same building, they'll be able to talk to each other. And then the arrival of materials before school starts, again, that's exciting. We're hoping to have almost like an open house day in each of the elementary schools and in the middle school, when the teachers can come in, get their materials, see what's in there, where we can be in the building supporting the teachers with the principal, with Ms. DeBonis, I'm sorry, supporting the teachers to get those materials in their classroom, get them unpacked, see what's involved with them, and really get excited about beginning to use them. I just wanted to add that the teachers in the Tier One group, as Ms. DeBonis said, we really asked for volunteers because we didn't want to force it on anyone, and we really wanted teachers who were interesting. They were just fantastic the entire time. They were so eager, as Ms. DeBonis said, the first five sessions were after school, and it's exhausting at 3:30 to have to sit for two hours. Part of that was our consultant was just fabulous, but the teachers came ready to learn. They came with their ideas, they talked about what they tried, they talked about what they wanted to do differently, and they were just great. So I wanted to thank, and we have a number in the audience, and then those who couldn't be here tonight, just want to thank them all as well.
Thank you very much. I feel signed for saying that I know you and Russ to teach the important part.
I just want to echo the thanks, and we, there's a lot learned in the district of the teachers to give them the time in this way. And like Ms. Blom said, we had almost twice as many people turn out for Tier Two than we could actually accept at this point. So we try to balance the buildings and the grade levels, et cetera. But we want to get everyone involved, which is one of the reasons we want all the materials in the rooms as quick as possible, because even if I'm not in that tier, there's no reason I can't talk to my colleagues and leverage the resources that are now in my classroom. Everyone should see a change in the physical reality within the classroom because it's not just Language Arts that changes. When you build a room around literacy, the entire classroom changes, the entire experience, therefore, for the student changes. It becomes easier to integrate your science, your social studies, your math, really become an avid reader. Again, it should make sense to everyone that when students like something, they're going to want to do it more frequently, and therefore they're wanting to get better at it. And so it really is an exciting time to thank you, Ms. Blom, certainly for running this, Ms. DeBonis, certainly to all the teachers. Again, I mean, I wish to be Ms. Klein, but I wish we could hire her and have her here full-time. But again, thank you, everyone. So we're looking forward to it.
Board members.
I just want a question. What is the plan for purposes of the communication? I know you said you want to have some type of workshop where parents come in, but is part of this program, you know, implementing regular communications with parents as to what specific level of child is that, so that parents themselves know?
The communication plan, again, as we roll out pretty much on us, our plan, as I said, even start as early as the summer if we could, is to start having these kinds of workshops to teach, the same way our teachers learn, we teach parents the philosophy behind. So that, I know as a parent myself, I walk into bookstore and I'm, well, what should I get for my daughters? What's appropriate, what's going to help them grow? We want to try and start answering those questions. And just simple, if you go, as I said, to my, to the superintendent's class page, the one resource I put up, which is the Scholastic Book List, really is a great resource to start for any parent, start looking and say, well, let's, just take some of the books that are already in your child's room and start seeing where they actually are and, you know, if your child should be reading them, et cetera. Start to get to know your son, your daughter as a reader. We will be following up through the website. We're going to be working with the PTOs to provide some regular readings that we can get parents to start explaining this. And again, the communication you're going to get from your teachers will start to change. We know what your DRA, what your LexisLs score is, that we're using privacy panel. We have to explain all those terms to parents, but then also communicate that Russ, you know, is a 22. In first grade, that means that he's actually really good about it. But again, what that means for second grade. And again, I would love to see some acceleration over the summer rather than that fallback, that regression that you see many times. If we empower parents to create the same kind of just write environment at home all year long, the summers and time when kids can be reading all the time.
So yes.
Absolutely.
Is that a wrong way to guess?
I have a question, and I think this is fantastic. Is there some kind of replenishment program or additional that we can add to this? Like 200 titles per classroom sounds like a lot, but I don't really know that it is.
Yes. I mean, we're starting with a base. And again, partly is not to overwhelm the students or the teachers, but to create a print-based environment. But as we move forward, as the board is putting these resources aside, we certainly can add. You go into many elementary rooms now, we're talking 500 to 600 titles. But again, you didn't get 500 to 600 at the first one. You took 200 to 250 to start learning the process and reading my books in these hands. And again, remember that the 200 to 250 is supplemented by the guided reading rooms, which is another component which we're going to talk about. Guided reading is a process where you really can try and individualize instruction for students in almost the kind of way many students get read to or with at home. You bring that all into the classroom. And you have four or five kids who are about the same level, given the same text at this point, so the teacher can modify instruction on certain skills that the kids can reinforce them at. So those are already, if you think about every single room, every single building is going to have one of these rooms now. So we're absolutely changed, but certainly we can build it from there.
Will be part of our budget.
Thank you very much.
All right, sir. Dr. Shipp, now it's Ms. Wong. I'll sit down.
You're going to click it?
I'll click it. It's up to you.
Okay. I was asked to come and talk a little bit about the preschool disabled program, the general ed preschool program we're going to be implementing in the fall. I'm going to talk about the need for it, why we have it, what the resources are that we need to implement it, and then aligning it with preschool standards. Purpose of the preschool class, now that I've been here a little over two months, I was very surprised to find that we did not have a general ed preschool class. The purpose of that is because the federal and state special ed mandates require... The purpose of that is because the federal and state special ed mandates require us to educate all students, particularly students with preschool disabilities, in faith, which is a free, appropriate education environment. But anyway, it's a least restrictive environment where, as least restrictive environment that we can actually provide, so that would be in the general ed class. The department, this is the OSEP, which is the federal government defines a regular preschool program as a program that includes a majority of, at least 50% of non-disabled children. I put the website, the, that you can go on and look for the original memos. Just so that you know, I honestly do not know of one district in Morris, Essex, Sussex, Warren, that does not have a general ed preschool program. I really was very surprised to not find one here. And, you know, just being here two months, I don't know that I would have pushed for it to September. I might have wanted to just be here a little bit longer before we start a new program. But we did, we do have students now, we have one that is actually included in a community program, and we have two students that will be with us in September that we're looking for least restrictive environment, so we needed to provide that. Again, preschool students are on a continuum where you have disabled, but then you can have very severely disabled. So this is really for the students who aren't disabled, not necessarily on the autism spectrum. Our code also requires, the New Jersey code, which you can get off of the website as well. So that's why we're, that's why we're having the program. I mean, we have to, it's time, it's long overdue, actually. The resources that we need to implement the program, we're only going to start with the AM program. I want to be careful, when you start something new, you really should do it slow. You think that you can anticipate everything you're going to need, sometimes you can't. So it's better if we just start off for next year in the AM. Mr. Carney's been really great. We need to do it at Radcliffe, because I found that your elementary schools, you only have one elementary school that's actually ADA accessible. So we have to do it at Radcliffe. And Mr. Carney arranged a room, the state requires that the room have a bathroom, and again, our preschool disabled classes average between five, seven, eight students. This will have 16 students ultimately. We're going to start out much smaller, where eight of the students will be general ed students, and 50% will be preschool disabled students. We do have to advertise that we are now having this preschool class. Usually we do it through our website, or we can do it through a local paper as well. Once the, and then we ask, we usually have a link on our website for applications. They can fill out the applications. When we get the applications, we actually have a lottery where we pick, because you'd be surprised, we get, usually in districts, you get quite a few general ed students that apply. So we actually have a bowl, and you put them in the bowl, and you have, pick a secretary to come and actually pull out eight names, because there's so many. So that's literally how we do it. The tuition for the general ed students will be about 3,000 for the 10-month program. Generally, it's a deposit with some type of a monthly fee, which I still need to work out with our DA. What's appropriate, actually, she and I were on the phone, and we started looking at different websites to see what other districts were doing. That's how we came up with the amount of money. That money for the first year will probably be used for furniture and supplies. Again, it's going to be a larger-than-normal class, so the money will go very quickly. I mean, we're not doing this to make money. If we break even, we'll, we'll be thrilled. The resources for the preschool disabled students will be in there are actually the same as would normally be if they were in the more restrictive preschool disabled program. So it wouldn't be anything outside the context of their IEP services that are required. Year two, we will go to the half-day in the AM, and then the half-day in the PM, and it will be on a five-day-per-week schedule. We are going to align, you know, I also found that our goals and objectives are not necessarily aligned with our, with the preschool teaching and learning standards. I did have a teacher, preschool disabled teacher, came to my office and said that she has experience teaching these general ed preschool classes, so, and she's very familiar with the teaching and learning standards. I have the preschool case manager here, Mr. Mafucci, who's absolutely fabulous. So I'll be working with the team members as well with respect to aligning goals and objectives with the preschool teaching and learning standards. There's actually four learning standards, but they do have standards that are aligned with the Common Core curriculum standards, math, language arts, you can move it, it's just a picture of it. This is just a preschool learning outcome. I mean, it's all spelled out, we have it, it just hasn't been implemented, so we will be doing it not only for this class, but for all of the classes, preschool disabled classes, and not so much in the autistic preschool classes, because they're very involved in the discrete trial. Here's just another example of the mathematics, the Common Core mathematics standards for the preschool, it's aligned with when they go into kindergarten, what those standards are. Similarly, for, there's preschool language arts standards. You know, effective preschool teachers will create cozy, comfortable reading areas with a variety of age-appropriate printed materials. I think we all heard how important it is that we learn how to read by third grade. I have our wonderful resource-centered teacher, Valerie Piesenza, who travels all through the district, implementing multi-sensory approaches to reading to our learning disabled youngsters, it's very important. So it's good to start as young as you can, so we're going to try to align all of the standards. Again, this is just more of the indicators and standards. So, that is the program we're proposing. Hope it'll be approved, and we really, we really don't have a choice, we really need to have this to be in compliance with state and federal mandates, it's not a choice. So we need to get the teacher approved. As I said, I had this person come in, but I haven't spoken to Ms. Lazzavick about her. She would be perfect. We do have to get State Department, County approval for the new program. I'll have to get him out this summer. Mr. Carney, again, he set up the classroom for 16 preschool students, which is large, because our preschool generally is five to eight, so all of a sudden, we have all these cute little three, four, and five girls, a lot of them. And again, when we go to the PM, we'll have up to 32, just in that one class, AM and PM. Because most preschool disabled students, their parents would want them in the general ed class. The whole purpose is so that they can model appropriate peer behavior. Yeah, that's how they learn, they learn through modeling vicariously. All right, step four, we need to work with teacher and team members to implement preschool teaching and learning standards through lesson plans and goals and objectives. And five, we need to customize real-time, it's a huge, the database to accommodate this new program and goals and objectives. I think we always forget about the database, but that's really important as well, because then when something goes wrong, everybody's up in arms. So, that's the program.
I can just say myself, I'm overjoyed. I've been looking for this for the last two and a half years personally. My question, besides being very happy about this program coming forward, is, is there, is there some exemption we can give from the state if we want to put this into another school down the road, like Yankel, for example? Even though it's not ADA-proof, do they allow us to somehow work this in?
Sure, and actually, the reason that we have to do it here for the next two or three years, because actually, the students that we're having, if you have a student coming in with a physical disability, then that's where it is. But if you know going down the, down the road, that you're going to have maybe two or three years where you don't have a student with physical disability, yeah, could do it, you could do the AM in one building, do the PM in another, which is great. It's really great, and it really shouldn't, it should, it should be pretty cost-effective, because we are charging tuition for it, so it helps that way, too.
So good, moving forward.
When are we going to add the top four? How are we going to let parents know that this is available?
As soon as we have board approval, I guess, then we'll go on the website, I'll meet with them, and we'll go on the website.
We talked about the rest, we talked about what the space is, gave the word out there, so it's good to be a classroom.
I don't know if we're going to do anything, and then that'll sign.
Absolutely, definitely, and there's extension of the papers and the rest. We want to make sure we get the word out there. This is just, it seems like we're winning every classroom, right? And earlier we had kids in school, all the national data showing it's going to get better for all of these, creating least restrictive environment for our students' special needs, but also, I mean, we have parents who've been learning this for a while, it's not just, it's not just childcare, it's school. You know, and the fees that we've been talking about, and how to get into the district are unbelievably reasonable. 300 for a half-day, five days a week, is incredibly reasonable, and it allows us to get a jumpstart on teaching and learning, as Dr. Schiff has said, in many ways, it becomes self-sustaining, so it's not, it's not part of our district's budget, we have tuition company to help offset the costs inherent in the program. So, you know, we need to become very successful at putting these spaces in place. This goes back to...
Doctor Schiff, thank you very much. That's it. Well, that's a question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And thanks to everyone who helped together and participated in the presentations, and more importantly, the work that they can set, why those presentations, even if they exist, for the class and everyone. We want to start off, we're happy to announce that we're receiving a donation from the Nutley Music Boosters Association. I believe there's a representative here who wants to make a presentation, is it Mary's? Is that correct? A question I have in there, if you don't mind giving a microphone.
Hi, I'm Mary Goldford, treasurer of Nutley Music Boosters Association, and if you don't mind, I'm going to read through my microphone. Thank you for having us on your agenda this evening. Nutley Music Boosters Association is excited to announce that we are donating a five-piece timpani set to the Nutley Music Department. This high-quality drum set costs $15,635. This purchase has been made possible by the boosters fundraising efforts and community support. Our students and music staff at Nutley work extremely hard, and we are grateful to continue this music booster tradition of providing support to these young musicians. Their continued success in music competitions and the unique educational enrichment and discipline that music study provides are primary goals of our association. Quality instruments such as this timpani set will add to the enjoyment and growth of both the students and their audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mary, thank you so much again, and obviously, your help to initiate the program has already reached the lives of our kids, greatly appreciated, so thank you very much for that. Back to updates, again, our silence pilot, K-3, actually finished, Mr. Van Tock at 17. As you see, we have purchases ready to go, teachers have heard their feedback, we're very excited about that. As far as the silence pilot grade set, I think, to your question again, Mr. Scoler, just to be clear, the way, the way that it's packaged and built, K-5 is really your elementary program, and 6/8 is your middle. So it's not that 6 was adopted, including the 6/8 examination, and they determined that seventh grade would be the best place to pilot, and that three grades thing. So based on the determination of seventh grade, you can see how we roll out to either sixth and where's that going to be. So that's, that's where we're looking. But with your, your vote, we're going to, saying the budget again, thanks again to Roche for their donation, their psychologists, certainly God's meaning. Again, this is something we're looking forward to, our program review process, but with their money, it's better. And thanks to teachers for taking on something else. We have one teacher, we have one general teacher teaching four or five different classrooms, so again, big thanks to them. Mathematics, our teacher traditions have arrived, is that correct, my notes up to date? Fantastic. Staff training, again, a huge thank to the teachers, they're excited. We made the trainings available the very last day of school, which is the 26th, as well as the first, technically, the first two days of their summer vacation, 27th and 28th, and I think at this point, we only have one teacher who will not be able to come. Everyone wants to immerse themselves in a new series, get the resources as we can, start using the summer, the plan for how we're going to change math instruction. So we're really excited about that. The remaining math teachers will be coming in the summer. As we did in plan, we're also going to plan to kind of roll them to the buildings and get teachers in, in a graduated fashion, so it's not everything all at once. And again, our Tier Two training begins next week, correct? So we're getting teachers right back in here, no rest for the weary. But we really appreciate that, and we're pushing forward. Special services, again, thanks to Dr. Schiff, now, the integrative pre-k is just part of what's been going on, special services-wise. A couple of announcements, I know this is drawing on this sphere, but looking forward to congratulating and helping personnel, both welcoming her to another position, which, from the associations, both associations to board education, support immigration, new positions, which we're greatly, and finding the exact right position for that position, so looking forward to that. And so we'll be hiring that new supervisor for special services. The other piece with special services, want to talk about, sorry, as we're moving forward, Dr. Schiff and us is kind of balancing pieces as we go, with kind of restructuring, probably looking for the extra administrative support, and just trying to make sure that as we move forward, we're doing everything as we need to, and we're supporting all of our students in the most appropriate way. I'm also happy to hire the board. As you know, we have a final 12 months supervisor on the agenda tonight, and I thought to take the opportunity, even though he's not here, to thank Mr. Schiff, our service, you know, it's a resolution, and again, my short time here, it's been terrific for people who've been sharing with me for a while, and other things they want to explore, and phenomenal program, falling to his lap, growing direction, people on that side. Again, thank you for having the boosters here. Also, we have our health and physical education coordinator, which will be on your agenda for today, and we have, thanks to Ms. Bonis and the teachers, we have a K-12 department on Wednesday, and so we're looking at every single one of these new hires in front of their staff members on Wednesday. Still not waiting until September, we're starting our work before this year begins. I was able to attend the last section, Campaign Connect, I really did talk about the bill. Again, Campaign Connect's a statewide organization bringing together higher education, public education, as well as advocacy networks, in an attempt to define appropriate school culture and build supports and a rating system for all districts, and that is a part of that. It's exciting, we finished our first year, we're looking to, we're going to be summer working on, so we'll kick off the second year in September, looking to roll out to a set of pilot districts to model, and make sure that both supporting students, fits right in with the character portion of our strategic plan, and it's just really terrific to be a part of it. Ms. Levine, as far as your partners direct last Thursday, is that correct? Down in Brunswick, I believe. We have a performance matters, New Jersey teachers group. It was great, I got some really good feedback from teachers and Ms. Levine, to see what other districts are doing, where the schools are going, counseling what people leverage to me, and also get to just make connections with teachers in other districts who are sharing the same, same stress, the same challenges, and trying to be creative together, so it's a great opportunity, and thank the teachers for giving it their time again. And then our long-range facilities planning committee that night, Ms. Denton should probably make a presentation, and then Mr. Scoler has an update on our election, which will happen there. Some upcoming important dates between now and when we get back together, we have our kindergarten graduating, pre-k graduations today, getting feedback from the principals, little KI is on the back end, but as far as everyone was concerned, everything went off well. So excited to look at this, and I had a good experience, and get excited about this summer and come back in September, ready to go again. Our eighth grade graduations tomorrow morning, 10:00 AM on the Field of Proxys Street, looking forward to that. And then each of our elementary buildings will have their sixth grade graduation at 2:00. High school graduation this Thursday night, starting at 6:00. All luck in our favor, we'll be outside. Our administrative retreat, which we have every summer for our administrators, from August 6th to 8th, and new teacher orientation rescheduled, the agenda's being built from August 27th to 29th. The only other date I want to add for the board is that we're having a follow-up Q-SAT visit, which is rescheduled from next week until 2:30 July. Speaking of dates, I'm sorry to have to do something this late, but it was brought to our attention that there was an issue with the school calendar. I made arrangements with the board for a couple of weeks, I talked to the Teachers' Association, the Administrators' Association. We are going to be changing the opening day of school, we moved that by day. The opening day of school is initially scheduled for Thursday, it will now be moved to the Wednesday, and the first two days of school will be half-days. This is to accommodate feedback that we got, that the first day of actual school for students was Rosh Hashanah, first day of Rosh Hashanah, and the last thing we want to do is while we did not give off for a number of religious holidays in general, we don't want anything of that importance to fall on the very first day of school. And so what we've done is we've moved that second professional development day to, it's scheduled to be Wednesday, and we've attached it to the Columbia State Weekend in October, so we can get in at professional development. We'll have Monday back for staff on Tuesday, students will be back for half-days on Wednesday and Thursday, and then we will be back for our first full day on Friday. The calendar will be available up on the website, and as promised, I also wanted to mention that people check out the 2013, 2014... mention that people check out the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen graduation schedule, which as I said, goes up July first. It details when all those graduations could happen, with that nice green column, and knock on wood, we won't have to use any emergency closing cases coming here, but if we do, that schedule will be changed in real time, so you can always go back to the date schedule as far as when our graduations will be happening. We did take parent feedback into account, and we have ensured that regardless of how many days we do or do not give back, that the eighth and sixth grade graduations will not fall on the last day of school, so that don't interfere with some of our other traditions, which are terrific for the kids and for the community. And so those are some of the changes that we see. Last piece was just our final Panasonic, is down in Monroe, where they brought in Dr. Christine Johns, who is the superintendent of the public schools, the school district in Michigan, over thirty thousand students, and she was sharing both change management and helping to make sure that there's equity across the board, and given students, especially these students, and our general students who are struggling, how do you take a district of thirty thousand and make sure that you're funding equity in every classroom? It's an interesting day, we have to speak with her, ask her all the questions, and see how the board feels here. You may not be surprised at how many things she has been doing over the past six years that are directly throughout strategic plan, so that's a big incentive.
The seniors' agenda is quite extensive as far as finance resolutions are concerned. We are going to be asking the board to approve a lot of annual resolutions and appointments, which take up the majority of the agenda. There's also a resolution this evening regarding a deposit to our capital reserve account. The state provides districts with the flexibility of establishing a resolution, giving a not-to-exceed amount. That amount on tonight's agenda is a million dollars. However, the actual amount will not be determined by the board until we receive our audit from June thirty of this year, which will be in December. So it enables the board to have an actual complexion, complete financial complexion of the school year before they make a determination as to what the actual amount that they're going to deposit into capital reserve, so that will probably be done beginning of December. You also see a lot of resolutions regarding some of our, not only the instructional resources, that Ms. Valon spoke about earlier, but also the technology resources that go along with the instruction that's going to be taking place in the classrooms. And last week, we are renewing our contract with Chartwell's to provide food and service. This is the fifth and final year of their original contract, and then next spring, we will be going out for our...
Thank you very much. Any other questions? That check?
Yes, long-range facility planning committee met tonight, the architect gave us a presentation, different options due to the increased enrollment, different options, what to do with each of the buildings, multiple options, actually, and we basically have to take that presentation now and digest all of the information of where to be meeting, probably within the next two days.
Mr. Sclera?
Thank you, Ms. Kuzinski. On school election realignment in the district, since our last meeting, I met Mr. Lazovich again today, I met with the township clerk, we're going to be sending, Mr. Lazovich will be sending a letter to her tomorrow, I asked her to request the county, committee after meeting with Commissioner Tucci, he's allowed us to do sixty-five Bloomfield Avenue, we have all technical occasion, we'll be moving, it's all approved by the county, we'll be moving Linking School, polling place to sixty-five Bloomfield Avenue, which we call the old church in Bloomfield. The first one of our schools, we'll have the elections hopefully moved out by October, we felt we had until next August, because we had November hand, hope we know, so we're doing that. I've reached out to the AMBETS, I spoke to Frank Monterey today, I'll be meeting with him hopefully on Friday, but the AMBETS are very excited, they've been trying to do more civic, got responsibility, and it looks like there's a possibility of realigning the Washington School polling place to the AMBETS, which will be on the corner of Walnut Park. I've also reached out and working with Dominic Calabala of the Nutley Museum, we're looking at the possibility of relocating Rattler School to the Nutley Museum, and they're working on that, and meeting on that to give us an answer on that. So, we have those three possibilities, we have other schools to discuss and more on our agendas in the next two weeks. Our committee of, Ms. Dent, Jack Barton, myself, and Mr. Reed will be meeting to talk about Spring Garden. I do that all the time, my fault, apologize, I saw his face, I knew I did something wrong with him. But we're talking, I have a meeting on Yenaclet Garden, trying to come up with some other discussions. So the committee's moving right along, and hopefully, if everything goes right, by October, we should be seeing more of our main building, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, anything?
Yes, after our last board meeting, the finance committee met, we talked about those resolutions that are on tonight's agenda, we talked about transfers, contract meals, we talked about the final payment to Vesta, and based upon the representations made by the BA, that everything is squared away with Vesta's relates to final certifications of completion, representations made by the contractors, that we are set to approve the final payment. It's recommended that we make that final payment tonight. We did, and during that, we did a comparison, the PA went over the contract price, the change orders, we went over the estimates that we provided, looked at it as a global aspect, and now we decided that everything was squared away, based upon the representation that everything was up to standard as it was supposed to be, and represented to us that everything was completely. Professional appointments, we talked about, there's some of the appointments we're making tonight are subject to an R and P process in accordance with our guidelines. I think we noted that a request was made by Tom Foley to increase her hourly rate, it was discussed by the committee, we discussed the fact we had a budget for that increased rate as a reward, so something we didn't agree to at this point of the year. It's our largest hourly rate we're paying right now for professionals, and we think what we're paying is consistent with, or as I thought, with guide, as it relates to professional services that we pay right now, so we were not in favor of increasing the rate, because we're aware it is right now. As the seniors noted, we did the audit of two thousand twelve, thirteen, based on initial numbers, we started talking about where to put the money, and based upon our better budgeting principles, and, you know, aligning our budget to our strategic planning, we're going to be able, as we did last meeting and this meeting, we have a number of purchases for this classical section, which is pretty exciting. We're going to make a huge investment in our math program, in the reading and writing materials talked about tonight, the science program, we're going to supplement what Roche has been able to give us, and start us off with the technology of administration community is not over, there's going to be a number of technology purchases made within the summer. We talked about our need to invest in the capital improvement, and seniors noted that we can make this up to a million, so based on our final audit numbers, we could dedicate money to capital, which is something we have board, we're talking about increasing our capital number, because it has traditionally been as high as enough for this type of district, so we are working towards that. And we talked about money that we'll need for general facility upkeep. We talked about the rise in medical estimates, it became a little lower than we initially anticipated, so that again, gives us that additional money to make these other investments within the district. So that was, it was lower than anticipated, so that was a positive result. We talked about staffing needs, in general, we're making a number of staffing decisions tonight, but we're also talking about payroll position, need to make it through the interim costs associated with that, until we have someone new, full-time, to deal with the enrollment pension that fits within the district. The seniors talked about the hiring process she's implemented for purposes of finding new treasurer schools and homes, so we're having a recommendation for that tonight, and we talked about salary increases for district-wide staff to maintain parity with our other increases that were implemented at the district. We talked about those recommendations, I understand that's something to discuss, and I want to bring this through. And in general, we talked about, you know, making sure that increase is going forward, also we, we report, I think, as a board, we think we should be met with the goals and objectives of these employees, that should always be looked at every year as well, when we talk about salary increases for those district employees.
Thank you, made some good calls there.
Do you have a question? What would I show, what do you anticipate? What was the, what do we anticipate?
I thought it was ten percent, you were...
And what did they think?
I think, I was, it was between three and four percent, I can't remember which it was.
What kind of savings were you, you have a number on what it was?
That's a problem, we don't have a number yet, but it wasn't definite savings.
That is true, it's a difference, yes.
We're not exactly sure what's going on.
I think when we budgeted, we tried to budget as worst-case scenario, so we'd be in a position, like you remember a few years ago, when we didn't budget, but we even budgeted worst-case scenario, we had to pay more, so we didn't want to be in that position again.
Yeah, we follow that practice there, which is pretty much luck for every district, depending on size, and you hope that it falls underneath that number. What should we do? You mentioned Tom Foley, and I've got, um, superintendent of markets, this is an update to the entire board, I received communication from Judge Payne, exposed by Mr. Cosmo, just announcing that our motion for summary judgment is filed, is going to be heard on Friday sometime twelve, and I think more importantly, that the motions and cross-motions that had previously been filed have now been marked withdrawn, since opposing counsel is no longer able to serve as opposing counsel.
No motion against us, opposing counsel.
Exactly.
Any other committee reports? We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board in this section, we allow some questions or comments on the resolutions addressed tonight's agenda. Our board regulation, the last twenty minutes for these communications, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try and stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally correct, or abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember, only state your name and address each and every time you address the board, first person can come forward. Not hearing any, we'll go into the resolutions. Mr. Plank?
Yes, Mr. President, actually, resolutions one to ten, that's it.
Go, go, Mr. Kudel.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton? Yes. Miss Flynn? Yes. Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes, I'm one for the nine, now I can.
Mrs. Sclera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spizada?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes. Mr. Spizada, do you take the administration person?
Yes, Mrs. Plank, we're managing the resolutions, one to four is ready.
Second.
Go, go, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Miss Plank?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Miss Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sclera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spizada?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes. Finance, Ms. Plank?
Yes, Mr. President, I think we're moving, finance resolutions one through eight, and then ten through thirty-eight, in time when we can call it wrapped.
Should we renumber that?
No, they didn't, they've been renumbered. They can renumber, okay, so one through thirty-eight, okay. I'll make a motion to approve finance resolutions one through thirty-eight as ready.
Second. Discussion? Go, go, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes, to all except no to resolutions twenty-five to twenty-six.
Miss Flynn?
Yes, to all as separately, resolution number twenty-two.
One?
No, yes.
Now on twenty-two.
Just no on twenty-two, yes definitely.
Miss Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sclera?
Yes, and I abstain on twenty-five.
Mrs. Spizada?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes. Mr. Sclera, will you take personnel resolutions?
I apologize, that's okay, but most of your, we have so much of a different agenda, so much happening, there's much changes to the general agenda, and much of the reappointment here. On the general agenda, I apologize, we've had a student work with us for a number of years, he's been terrific, but as he's now gradually, he can't appoint him, and so for the purposes of the general agenda, if you look at page three, you have to move my Russo a couple of times. Apologize to the end.
Do you have a resolution about that, or is this a rule we're losing right now? Mr. Sclera, are you going to move resolutions excluding that one?
Yes, I will, move our resolutions one through five as a...
Second, then?
Hold my resolution, hold my resolution. Just take resolution one, we're on this day.
Just the resolution one?
Yeah.
Because I'm sure board members want to say something about the...
I make a motion to move our personnel agenda number one as a...
Discussion? Go, go, on resolution number one.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Miss Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Miss Russo?
I'm going to abstain for seven to one.
Mrs. Sclera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spizada?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Change the reappointment agenda to turn to K to nine. We have every staff member in the district, and we're going to have a reappointment, we have a reappointment, unfortunately, but congratulations to Ms. Powell, who by passing the first resolution is now according as our coordinator for Health and Physical Education, but she's listed as a teacher, we won't be appointing her to job, but she'd probably get two both. So as far as the second amendment for this, if you come to the age, I will be removing her name as to come for teaching last year.
So we'll remove personnel agenda number two as commanded.
Second.
Discussion? Go, go, please, on resolution number two, as a minute.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Miss Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Miss Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sclera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spizada?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes. Mr. Sclera, do you do resolution number three?
And I'll do three, that's correct, yes. Resolution number three, whereas Mr. George Ackerman has tenured his resignation as coordinator of business and creative arts effective July first, two thousand thirteen, and has signified his intention of retiring from active service, and whereas Mr. Ackerman has served as a teacher, finest industrial arts chairperson, and coordinator of business and creative arts in Nutley Public Schools for a period of forty-two years, and whereas through the years, Mr. Ackerman has exemplified the finest qualities of his profession at all times, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education expressed to Mr. Ackerman its deep appreciation of his long and faithful service, and extends to him its best wishes for continued health and happiness, be it further resolved with this resolution, you may be part of the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Chief President, of course, Mr. Ackerman was a teacher in line at the school, I have pleasure in working with him at the Career Advisory Council, also a cultural artist, that was a nice nickname, but he's been missed, great guy, Mr. Ackerman, and thanks for all the years of service.
Yes, I would like to also say that Mr. Ackerman has been a senator of that department over there, he's done a great job for us, I also worked with him when I was on board previously, outstanding man, good friend and a good teacher, and amazing.
I have to also state that he's been there since I was in school, and been involved with him, and what a great figure he's been to this district, I don't think you can find a graduating student that had touched Mr. Ackerman that could say a bad word about him from any aspect, and he'll truly be missed like that in the district.
Go, go, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Miss Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Miss Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sclera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spizada?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes. Mr. Sclera?
Resolution number four, whereas Mr. Michael Candary has tenured his resignation as coordinator of music effective July one, two thousand thirteen, whereas Mr. Candary has served as teacher and coordinator at the Nutley Public School for a period of fourteen years, and whereas through the years, Mr. Candary has exemplified the finest qualities of his profession at all times, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education... now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education expresses Mr. Candary its deep appreciation of his long and faithful service, and extends its best wishes for continued health and happiness, and be it further resolved, that this resolution be made part of the minutes of this meeting.
Second. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I go back to Mr. McCandary meeting, actually, when he was going to school here, and then when he was hired into our music department, the doctor Herbeck, the doctor DeCrescen, he's still here, and he brought a few things to music. I grew up in the music program here in the seventies, remembering Mr. Kohair, we only had the choralets, and sometimes octets, if we had enough guys that wanted to be in the octets, and as well as our plays, Mr. Candary took a program that was a good program and made it a tremendous program. I often state, when you look at our choir today, and you can see up there, and I'll talk about the boys first, the boys that are from the football program, the hockey program, the lacrosse program, the crew program, the way he was able to energize students to be involved. You know, we always talk about, it's, you know, music, sports, and education. Mr. Candary got that. He brought it all together for our students, and truthfully, and many, my son is lucky enough to have for two years in the choir and two years here. He left instrumental coming into seventh grade, but Mr. Candary talked him into it, wanted to do computer combos between standing with the trumpeters, singing, and whatever, Mr. Candary. But he's already said to me, I hope the music teacher's is good, because always I'm not staying in music. And that's been said by many of the students to me, especially the ones that have been in sports. So he's going to be missed, I wish him well, he's going to a great school, and I think I'll be hearing from him, seeing great things. Just in closing, I'll state we performed at the Festival of Gold, kind of Mr. Candary afterwards, when a conductor came up, who was there, in fact, the conductor said publicly, he says, "I can't really critique your choir, as I did others, there's nothing else I can change that your conductor didn't do." And each other choir, when they go out for forty-five minutes an hour, do correction and did other things. I stand with Mr. Candary afterwards, and he came up and handed him a spark, and said, "If you're ever looking for some place for the future, call me." So I think I'll agree with what he said. I'm sorry we're not so long, but I've been a great person with this district, and we're going to listen.
I'm sure we could all go on all night about the services Mr. Candary gave to our children, and he's going to be surely missed on that. I hope our new appointment, I wish him well, he does have issues with him, I'm asking Mr. Candary. Any other statements? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dan Chek Martin?
Yes.
Miss Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Miss Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
He said yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It's not...
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Try number five.
One second, I'm making adjustments just now. Sorry, Mr. President. Resolution number five, whereas the following teachers have tenured their resignation and have signified their intention of retiring from active service, whereas through the years, they exemplified the finest qualities of their profession at all times, now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation of our long and faithful service, and extends its best wishes for continued health and happiness. Be it further resolved, that this resolution should be made part of the minutes of this meeting. Susan Jesamaria, eighteen years. Hillary Hill, thirty-five years. Paul Gokum, thirty-three years. Frank Leiber, twenty-three years. Donald Manfria, eleven years. Florence Myers, thirty-two years. Pecky Pandolfi, twenty-five years. Peggy Razinsky, sixteen years. Patricia Sloan, forty-one years. Marilyn Testa, twenty years. And Michael Cristodora, sixteen years.
Second.
Discussion. Again, I can't thank the, if you, I didn't add the years up, I just imagine what total is, and amount of dedicated time that they've put into our children and to the district. I know some of these teachers, I'm sure they're going to be missed. It's a busy year, a busy time of year, appointing new people to replace people that are moving on, going to be tough to replace some of these teachers.
Mr. President, I don't hope all of them personally, if any of them are here, they'd like to stand and recognize, it's okay? Something...
You're enjoying what's hard.
Sorry about that, enjoy it. But I want to make sure that... Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dan Chek Martin?
Yes.
Miss Flynn?
Yes.